Welcome back to open session. Chancellor Burke will provide a welcoming greeting.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Zoom board meeting of the South Orange County Community College District. We thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate the virtual platform. We welcome board members who are participating via Zoom webinar. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted. Trustees Marsha Milchikir, Tim Jamal, Terry Witt-Rydel, Barbara J., Carolyn Inman, TJ Prendergast, James Wright, and Student Trustee Satara Matin have been designated as panelists. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public who are viewing the meeting live via Zoom webinar. Following the meeting, the district will make the recording available on the SOCCCD website, and the video will be closed captioned. As a reminder, board members are asked to use the raise hand feature via Zoom when they wish to speak and are encouraged to mute their audio when not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested for public comments to be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will be read aloud at the appropriate time during the meeting. I would now like to turn the meeting over to trustee Milchikir, who will call the meeting to order.
Thank you. The June 28, 2021, meeting of the Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953 and Governor Newsom's executive orders N. 2920 and N. 3520. I ask that trustees mute themselves at this time. Chancellor Burke, were there any actions taken in closed sessions?
There were no actions taken that need to be reported out.
That's right. Right now, we will have an invocation led by trustee James Wright, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by trustee Carolyn Inman. So please join trustee Wright in the invocation.
Okay. Our Father, who is in heaven, we thank thee for gathering us together in this board meeting. We again thank thee for the freedoms that we have and to live in this great land of America. We pray for all those who are suffering the physical, emotional, and economic impacts of COVID-19. We ask thee to bless and inspire our leaders and those efforts to protect the health and well-being of all people and to find solutions to address the challenges we are facing in our nation. We pray for strength to overcome fear and anxiety, for inspiration to protect ourselves and our families, and for awesome ability to minister to those in need. We are thankful for our students and for our dedicated faculty, administrators, and staff in the Community College District. Bless our Board of Trustees, our chancellor, and all those who attend in our decisions and efforts this day. We sincerely pray for guidance and to do so humbly in his name. Amen.
Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Now, I would ask the chancellor to read aloud any public comments received via email. And if a public member has submitted a written comment and has requested to speak, their name will be called, and they will be unmuted and allowed to speak. A two-minute time limit will be observed. Please note, all email correspondence related to the meeting will become part of the board minutes.
We did not receive any public comments this evening.
Oh, surprise. Okay, thank you. At this time, we move to the report section, and first we do the board reports. The first board report today is by trustee Prendergast. He's number one today. We're rotating.
Just today. Okay, so as we all, most of us were able to attend the tour of Saddleback College. Many thanks to the people involved with putting that together. It was very informative. Looking forward to the tour of IVC tomorrow, and that's all I had to report.
Okay, thank you. And the next trustee, James Wright, do you have a board report?
Yes, I do. I am writing to say thank you for your help and support for getting me into the United States Air Force Academy. This is an email that I got from Alexa Pack. It seems like it was only yesterday that we sat down and talked about the academy. When I was a student at the Saddleback College in 2017, Alex Pander, she just received on May 26, 2021, I graduated with a bachelor's degree in cyber science from the United States Air Force Academy at commission as a second lieutenant in the United States Air Force. My time there wasn't easy with all the academic and military duties, but I can say that it was well worth it. I am greatly, I am currently on my designated 60 days of leave and wait to go to pilot training. Thank you again for your help with my second application for the Air Force Academy, and I cannot emphasize enough that your support is what helped me to get to where I am today.
How nice. Thank you. And next trustee, Tim Jamal.
Yes, I echo what trustee Prendergast said about the tour at Saddleback. I appreciate it and look forward to tomorrow as well. I was able to attend virtually the Saddleback College Employee Recognition Ceremony, or at least most of it, and I thought that was very well done on the part of Dr. Stern and the others who put it together. I'm sure others will talk about the commencement at Saddleback. I'm sorry I missed it. I was in Arizona watching my son play college baseball in the playoffs, so decent reason. I guess there could be better reasons, but I'm sorry I missed it. And then it was good to hang out with Dr. Hernandez and Assemblywoman Cadi Petri Norris at IVC a couple of weeks ago as they were providing COVID-19 vaccinations at the IVC Performing Arts Center. So it was really nice to catch up with Dr. Hernandez and to spend time with our Assemblywoman. And then lastly, it's just, you know, during the summer months in particular, I seem to see more students everywhere, whether it's at Trader Joe's or some other place, working a second or third job in addition to going to school. I see a Saddleback student, Ivy student, I swear every day, and it's really awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Terry Witt-Rydel.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say thanks to the Ivy staffs for all of their work on their virtual commencement and also at the beginning of last month is when we had the drive-through. That was just a lot of fun for us and for the students, the graduates, and their families. I also wanted to thank them for giving the IVC scholarship awards. I thought it was very well done and putting us in groups, although I had to leave early. Also, as trustee Jamal said, the employee recognition awards was done extremely well, and I'd like to thank President Stern and his staff for doing it. It was, it really was, it was the best I've ever seen done at Saddleback, and I've been there for a long time. The car commencement at Saddleback was just super, and I can't say enough about it with its pomp and circumstance and mixed with an incredible amount of fun. And the feedback that I got from so many of the family members, it was awesome. It really was, and high-tech. I really enjoyed that. The tour, I'm sorry I missed, I'm on vacation right now, so I hope my communication stays with you because we have severe thunderstorms coming here. And also, I attended the Saddleback College Foundation meeting. It's always good to see what's happening in that committee, and a lot is happening. We have the gala going, and I'll have more to report on that. And it's always appreciated how President Stern updates the committee because our committee, I believe, I really believe in my heart and in their hearts that they really care about this position, and they want to do the best for our colleges and bring in more and more scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you. And next trustee Carolyn Inman.
Thank you. I ditto everything that you said about some of the events. I think I said something like this once before, but it's amazing to me how creative people have been with the use of Zoom. I think most of us didn't like it at all when it started, and we're certainly looking forward to meeting in person and stuff, but, you know, the scholarship thing was, I didn't know what to expect, but then when we got in the small rooms and we actually got to talk to some of these students, more like listen, it's more important, but, you know, that was really creative. And the other creative thing was the commencement. I thought it was just fabulous that they could take a screenshot if they wanted, and so while they're driving, you know, their picture is up there and their titles and their thanks to whoever, parents, teachers, all kinds of people. And, you know, I was thinking, really, they got more individual attention than if we had been in a traditional, a traditional setting where you kind, I haven't seen one of yours, but usually the clock across the stage, and that's nice. But this was really more recognition and more attention, so I really liked that. Anyway, thank you very much. It's been a very exciting month.
It has been. Thank you. And trustee Barbara J.
Oh, thank you. With sincere gratefulness, I'd like to thank our district personnel for the way they came together and responded so professionally throughout the unprecedented time of COVID. I'm so proud of all the faculty, staff, and managers. You are amazing. You work so hard, and we are so grateful for your vision, innovations, ideas, and complete support throughout this difficult period. Thank you. On Friday, May 21, I attended the virtual IVC Scholarship Award Ceremony. Foundation Director Alyssa Oransky welcomed all of us and broke us into groups. Edwin Congenson was the head of my group, which was three scholarship sponsors and seven students. The students told us about their majors, their future plans, and why they applied for a scholarship. This was interesting, well organized, and a very creative event. The three donors then spoke. Scholarships totaling $408,000 were awarded. A special thanks was given to Lisa Greenberg, IVC Foundation Board of Governors' president, for all her hard work and generosity as she finishes her three one-year terms as president of the Board of Governors. On Thursday, May 27, I attended the commencement celebration at Saddleback College and cheered on the graduates. At the same day, I watched the virtual graduation for IVC. On Tuesday, June 15, was the IVC Foundation Board of Governors' meeting via Zoom, which I attended. This is Lisa Greenberg's last Board of Governors' meeting as president, and a huge thanking was given her. The next president of the Board of Governors is Mike Durgan, and we welcomed him. The IVC Foundation retreat is planned for August 3, and it's going to be in-person. There was a big thank you given to Betty Jo Woollett, going out board member, and a renewal was given to the continuing board members. The board approved $50,000 pro-IVC matching funds for 2021-22. There was also a presentation of the IVC demographics given by Laura Rajoli. And IVC President John Hernandez gave an update on the summer and fall terms. This is the last meeting of the IVC Foundation Board of Governors for the academic year.
Thank you. I'll give my report. Our campuses have opened up, and trustees, as you have heard, are touring both colleges to enjoy seeing our newest facilities and to evaluate new construction and new proposals. We now welcome anyone in the community who wants to explore our beautiful campuses and our gorgeous new facilities. I enjoyed our celebrations honoring our newly tenured professors, professors and Staff of the Year, and Employee Recognition Ceremonies at both colleges and the Scholarship Award Ceremony at IVC. Well, the Saddleback commencement was in-person, as the trustees mentioned, and students drove through, and their photos, majors, hopes and dreams, and favorite quotations were projected on a huge screen. Everyone celebrated, students, their families, professors, administrators. Well, I've never missed a commencement, and I surely will recall this one very fondly. The IVC commencement was online because they had their drive-through or pre-commencement celebration last month. I registered for my emeritus classes for the fall. Some at Saddleback and one at IVC. It was a pleasure. I successfully fought to save these classes for so many years, and now I'm old enough to take advantage of them myself. And classes start again in the middle of August, so sign up now, and I'll help you if you need help. I'm an active member of many organizations that raise scholarships for Saddleback and IVC students, and this month I attended three of their scholarship award ceremonies. All through the pandemic, these friends worked hard to raise funds and select their scholarship winners. The students who won these scholarships spoke, and they were incredible. In reading the scholarship applications, it brought tears to my eyes to learn of the challenges these students face, and more tears as I learned about the incredible assistance they got from both Saddleback and IVC. They said they'd never forget our colleges, and I was so proud. Okay, thank you. And next, we have a student trustee speaking, giving her report, Satara Matin. Do you have a report, Satara?
I don't have a report, but I'm excited to attend the IVC tour tomorrow.
Excellent. Wonderful. And right now, the Irvine Valley College, the Associate Student Government, and we have a lot of new people now in these positions. The new Saddleback College president is Sam Lockirk, and the IVC president is Hunter D'Angelo. Are they here?
I cut out for a second, but if you mentioned Saddleback's Associate Student Government President, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. So do you have a report that you'd like to give, or do you just want to say you're here?
Well, hello, and thank you for having us being represented on Board Trustees. My current report is that Saddleback's Associate Student Government is currently looking to recruit new members for various positions and in future are, we're looking to tackle environmental and political causes once we get a sufficient, sufficient staff. And my report is, thank you for having me, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome, welcome to the board meeting. Is the IVC student here?
No, I don't see D'Angelo here.
Okay. And right now, the Irvine Valley College Academic Senate President, Danielle DeRoule, and you're new again. Are you here?
Good evening, trustees. Thank you very much for having me here this evening. I'm looking forward to participating in your meetings this year. My name is Danielle DeRoule. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a professor of English at IVC. This is my 12th year, this will be my 12th year at IVC. I'm very much looking forward this year to working with our president, John Hernandez, on our diversity, equity, and inclusion program at IVC. And we're also looking forward to taking what we have learned about tech and online teaching during our COVID episode and using that to apply and strengthen our instruction and course offerings. So again, pleased to join you, and thank you much for having me.
Excellent. Thank you. And the next, Saddleback College Academic Senate President, Margot Lovett.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Margot Lovett, and I am honored to represent the faculty of Saddleback College as Academic Senate President and to give my first president's report on their behalf. I think it's long overdue that the members of the Boards of Trustees get to know the Saddleback College faculty in a context other than when we're addressing you in public comments during contract negotiations. So over the next year, I will introduce you to a number of remarkable individuals who I am honored to call my colleagues. And while I will single some out by name, you should know that they are representative of the vast majority of Saddleback College faculty who mentor students, serve as advisors to student clubs, officially and unofficially advise students, and oversee student research and presentations at academic conferences. Students' lives are transformed in our classes and in library and counseling sessions, and we know that because our students tell us so. While they are here or years later, as they look back on their experience at Saddleback, they tell us how much it meant to them that we believed in them and pushed them to accomplish things they never thought they could. And for our parts, we watch with more pride than I can adequately express as our students develop confidence in themselves and their abilities and move on to the next phase of their lives, be it transferring to a four-year school or securing a desired job. I know that those board members who have taught at Saddleback in the past, who currently teach at other schools, know exactly what I'm talking about. Remarkable things happen at Saddleback. Students and sometimes professors' lives are transformed. We all need to hear and celebrate these stories, and I am so happy that over the next 12 months, I can share some of them with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And next, the Faculty Association President, Louis Lam.
It'll be coming up.
I'm sorry it took me a while to get logged back in. I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, well, thank you for coming. And then the next will be another new person, which is wonderful. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening. Yeah, Desiree will be beginning on July 1, so, but, good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Burke, Vice Chancellors, college presidents, and the community. On this final board meeting as IVC Classified Senate President, I wish to take this moment to thank the nearly 200 IVC classified professionals who have served with such dedication, commitment, and care alongside me during my two-year term. I wish to also thank our college president, Dr. Hernandez, and our college administration and supervisors for their support these past two years. This has been a two-year term unlike any other. We accomplished so much, and I'm so incredibly proud of all that we have completed in these past two years, from their active participation in all aspects of shared governance and participation in our meetings and college-wide student support efforts, our amazing efforts in launching and implementing caring campus all the while during a global-wide pandemic. We took the impossible and made it possible. I'm so proud to be part of this amazing group of classified professionals, and I thank my current cabinet, including Angela Roscoe Mahaney, Rachel Manders, Jeanette Mario, Nosir Kandon, Karen Jimenez, and I look forward to supporting and working alongside a brand-new cabinet beginning July 1, again led by Desiree Ortiz, and including new members Jeanette Mario, Nosir Kandon, Amanda Turner, and Nathan Ojeda. So great job to our IVC classified, and we are IVC strong.
Thank you. Lot of, lot of exciting reports today. Thanks so much. And the next will be the, I'm just, I think I just, wait, here it is.
Yes.
Darren England, is Darren England, right?
Yes, he is not in attendance.
Okay, thanks. And I know Scott Ferguson-Green is not in attendance. So is the Police Officers Association, Beau Arbuthnot, is he here?
No, he is not.
Okay, so are there any board requests for reports?
We have not received any.
Okay. Well, the first item on the board will be a discussion item, and it's item 4.1 is the tentative budget, and it'll be presented to the Board of Trustees. And after this item, we will take item 6.1, which is to vote on the budget. So we're moving 6.1 immediately after this item. Okay, thank you. So I think it's Anne Marie Gabel, Vice Chancellor Gabel is presenting this, is that correct?
Actually, I am going to introduce the Executive Director, Kim McCord, and she's going to be doing the presentation. So let me bring her on so that she can speak. And as I'm bringing her on, I just want to thank Kim and her staff, as well as both Devi Kakatrian and Corey Watson for all their help in working on the tentative budget.
So this is the tentative budget, and the final budget will be presented to the board on the August 23 meeting.
We'll get started. Good evening, good evening, everyone. I'll walk you through our tentative budget presentation. Anne Marie, are you advancing the slides? Yeah, there we go.
Yes.
And so on the agenda is, we'll first go over our board philosophy and budget guidelines, then the actual numbers in our tentative budget for 21-22. We'll go over some of the assumptions we've used, the basic aid allocation, and then cover some budget trends and next steps in the budgeting process. So just a reminder, the tentative budget is our draft budget that we use to start the year. It's based on the best estimates we have. Most of the information is based on the May revise. That was what we had at the time that this presentation was prepared. Our fiscal year end is June 30, so that's just on Wednesday. We'll be working hard in the next few weeks to get all of our accruals in and to get our actual revenues and expenses finalized for the fiscal year. And then the next step is our adopted budget, which will include those final revenues and expenses and the final state budget, once they finalize that, hopefully this week as well. So the board's philosophy on budget is to ensure the wise and prudent use of our public resources. We want to promote financial strength and stability and to maximize the educational opportunities for students. These are the categories of our budget development guidelines of note are how we set our reserves for economic uncertainties, how we allocate funds to our colleges and for basic aid allocations, and also how, number six, we do our GASB-OPE trust, how we make sure we plan for our retiree medical benefits. So here we have the overview of our tentative budget. The top line is our unrestricted general fund, and that is our main operating budget. The beginning balance is estimated at $70 million. This includes the current year reserves that we have set aside and the estimated ending balances for our colleges. We're planning on 314, almost 315 million of revenues, expenses of 326 million, and the difference of the revenues and expenses is a negative 11.3 million. So that means we plan to spend down some of our beginning balance and have an ending balance of about 59 million. One of the other funds of note is our large fund, our capital outlay fund. We have the beginning balance of 338 million. The majority of that is money that is budgeted for projects that have been allocated through our basic aid. A lot of that is already committed and obligated for our projects and contracts. We have new revenues of 139 million. That includes the state funding for several of our state-funded projects and the new basic aid allocations for the new year. And then the expenses is really how we budget all of those funds together for our projects, the 476 million. So it shows a deficit of 337, but that really is that we plan to budget all of the funds that we have available for our projects as they are allocated. So as the total, we have a beginning balance. So as the total, we have a beginning balance of almost 590 million, revenues of 626 million, expenditures of 974 million, with an ending balance of 240 million next year. That's our estimates for right now. The next slide, this is just a summary of those first two columns from the last slide. So you can see the total resources that are available. Again, on the unrestricted general fund, we have the 70 million beginning balance, the 350 million in revenue. So we have a total resources of 385 million. And the total at the bottom, you can see for the entire district and all funds, we have 1.2 billion in total resources available. Next slide is how those funds are allocated. Again, we'll concentrate on our unrestricted fund for salaries and benefits. We have 207 million dollars budgeted. For supplies and services, 27.7 or 22, sorry, 0.7 million. Only 320,000 for capital outlay in that fund. And then the 96 million for payments to students and other uses. The majority of that is our basic aid money that we're actually transferring from that fund into our capital outlay fund for our basic aid projects. But there are also some student payments in there. So that total is 326 million. And again, on the total, the bottom line for all funds, 255 million for salaries and benefits, over 95 million for supplies and services, 463 million for cap outlay, the bulk of that is in our cap outlay fund. And then we have 161 million for mostly transfers and student aid. You'll see on the student financial aid line, we have 48 million dollars for financial aid payments to students. Of that, about 18 million is our HERF one-time funds. So that is, that number is larger than most years. But that's quite a lot of resources available for our students. And our total expenses again are 974 million. Right. So some of the assumptions used to build the budget, again, this was based on the governor's May revise that we had last month. And the final state budget that will be finalized this week will be getting incorporated into our adopted budget. Our student-centered funding formula, the basic calculation for our main funding includes a COLA right now of 4.05%. That has 2.31% compounded for 2120, 2021. That was not funded by the state, so they are backfilling that. And an additional 1.7% COLA, which is the COLA for 2122. There's no growth money in the budget. And our FTES funding is still held harmless to our 1920 FTES. Some assumptions on the property tax revenues, that 3.8% is the estimated increase in our secured property taxes. Our salary increases include our stepping column only. We have, we're still in negotiations with all of our bargaining units, so no increases are included for COLA. Our PERS and STIRS rates are listed there, PERS at 2291, STIRS at 16.92. Our health and welfare benefits was estimated at 3%. We actually have finalized our benefit renewals. And for the adopted budget, believe it or not, we're going to be in a negative 0.1%. That's the first time I've seen a negative health and welfare renewal. But very favorable renewal. So our cost is actually going down 0.1%. The unemployment insurance rate, this used to be 0.05%. Because of the large number of unemployment claims during the pandemic, the reserves have been taxed. And so the rate proposed was 1.23%. We did get some confirmation that the state is going to be funding some of those reserves and that that rate is expected to be lower, I think about 0.5% now. And then workers' comp, we had an estimate of 1.32. And our final renewals, actually, we got recently as 1.26. So we'll see a few lower numbers when we get to the adopted budget on our benefits. And then as usual, we have our 7.5% reserve for economic uncertainties. That's set for 14.6 million. The reserve for unrealized tax collections, that's 20% of our basic aid calculation, and that's 19.5 million. The EPA funds are budgeted at 2.64 million and we do budget those for part-time faculty salaries and benefits. And then we have our lottery revenue, which is 4.1 million, and that is based on $150 per FTES. A summary of our basic aid fund calculations. So we have an estimated balance at July 1st of almost 22 million. Most of that is our reserve that we had this year. But it also includes some funds that were returned for projects that were closed. The new receipts are 97.4 million. So the total available is 119.3 million dollars. There's a small piece that did not get allocated, 289,000. We have our new contingency of 19.5 million. And the difference then is the 99.5 million that we allocated. Of course, these will be updated at the adopted budget, once we have our final tax receipts. But just a reminder of the basic aid allocations that were approved at our April board meeting. There's 4.5 million for our obligations, which includes our OPEP trust for retiree liability, benefit liability and our pension stabilization trust. We have 48 million for capital projects, 2 million for our special project support, our annual 3 million for ADA projects, over 17 million for scheduled maintenance and renovation, and then our district-wide technology projects of 16.5. So that's our total 99.5 million that we've allocated. So some trends, COVID-19 pandemic has caused a drop in our enrollments that will probably take several years to recover. We're lucky that we still are able to use our 1920 base right now for funding, but that would likely go away in the following year. Our property tax percentages have continued to trend down. So while our taxes still increase each year, it's a smaller increase from year to year. If I look back at 1718 fiscal year, the taxes went up 7.39% from the prior year. In 1920, they only went up 5%. For the current year, 2021, we're projecting between 3.5 and 4%. And for the budget, when you include all taxes, that's secured, unsecured, supplemental and the homeowners, we're only projecting a 3.48% increase year over year. So while there's still increases, which is great, they're not as dramatic as they used to be. And the state-provided COLA and growth have not been adequate to support our increased personnel costs. And you can see that on the last bullet. Right now, we're budgeting 89.9% of our total budget on personnel, and that's an increase from last year. Another item on our budget trends is our PERS and STIRS. We do have a pension stabilization fund that helps provide these additional costs to the colleges to backfill them. But for the current year, the STIRS and PERS amounts were about 22 million. In 1516, they were about 11 million. So we have actually doubled that. And when you get out to 2425, the annual cost is estimated to be about 26 million. So over nine years, it's going up 15 million dollars a year. That's a significant cost. So we're lucky we have that pension stabilization fund to help offset these operational costs. And so for our next steps, of course, we're going to closely monitor the state budget. The legislature and governor initially were very far apart. I know they've been working on that. They need to come to an agreement on the revenue budget. And there's several niche programs that they've been created, several around mental health and needs for our students, which is great. And then a junior budget bill is expected to help resolve any differences. This next slide is a summary of the governor's May revise and the joint legislature budget. So there's several items of note. The first is the COLA, the governor had 4.05%, but the legislature proposed 5.07, which would match the K-12 COLA. So we're hopeful that will get in there. You can see for strong workforce on the fourth line, the legislature proposed a much greater amount, 40 million instead of the 12 million. There's definitely a focus on adult ed and the vocational ESL. Some mismatches, the legislature had more for adult ed, but then zero for the vocational ESL. And the governor had 50 million for that line item. Quite a bit of funds for deferred maintenance on both of their proposals, which is great. And those last two line items, part-time faculty compensation for office hours. So the legislature had put in 75 million and 170 million to increase our full-time faculty. So we're very anxious to see how those proposals fare in the final budget. Right. And our next steps are to monitor also our enrollment trends and respond as needed. We definitely need to evaluate how we're using the HERF funds to offset our reopening needs and definitely address our lost revenues that we are down. And then we are going to be getting right into our year-end closing now and preparing our adopted budget for the August board meeting. And I'm sure Vice Chancellor Gabel may have some updates for us, because I know there's been some movement in the budget.
Yes, I'll flip back to this slide just for a moment. We have heard that the legislature and the governor have come to agreement on what the final budget's going to be. I think the budget bill is SB 129. We're still trying to sift through that. I haven't seen a real cohesive document come out yet. There's also going to be trailer bills that have not been printed yet that we'll need to go through. But we do know that the COLA line has been agreed to at the 5.07%. Recall that 2.35 of that is related to 2021 and 2.72 is really related to 2122. Some of the other big changes that we've heard about on the deferred maintenance, that is going to be 511 million. So it's actually going to be less than what was in the May revise and less than what was in the joint legislature. But 511 is still a huge infusion of scheduled maintenance money that is much needed for the colleges. Then the other thing that we heard is on the full-time faculty, we think that that's going to be 100 million only, so not this full 170 million, but that's one of the ones that we need to work out. So there are changes that have been made and we will bring all those to you when we do the adopted budget and incorporate all that into our adopted budget. So with that, I'll open it up to questions from anyone.
Are there any questions? Trustee Jamal has a question.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to Kim and Anne Marie. You're always well-prepared. I appreciate it very much. A few questions. Do we have a budget deficit in the district?
I would say that we do have a budget deficit when we're doing the budget. You know, this year, when we built our budget, we had projected a deficit. But I think with the outcome of COVID and all the HERF money, we're probably going to show a surplus when we end 2021. But I don't expect that to continue into 2122 or 2223 that much.
So it looks like we have, we're going to have a structural deficit. And is the district in deficit, will be in deficit, or will be the colleges or all three entities?
All three entities.
And where, what are we going to, how are we going to address the budget deficits? Is there a plan in place?
So I think all of us are looking at it. We are trying to trim our expenditures. We are evaluating our vacancies. We know that we have strong reserves. And so I think we will be utilizing our reserves for the next probably two or three years in order to address it. And our reserves should allow us to ride that out for two or three years. So that's kind of, you know, it's a combination of things.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So in terms of trimming our expenses, what would that mean? Are we talking about personnel? When I saw, I saw your number, you presented 90% of the budget is comprised of personnel costs, our personnel are our most valuable resource. Obviously, our students are a valuable resource, but we don't pay them. So where would we trim our expenses?
So, you know, it could, it could be in personnel on, I would say, the hourly side. We try not to trim on the permanent side, but that's where I said we're evaluating vacancies to see, okay, is that, is the vacancy needed and is it needed in that area? And so I think anytime a vacancy comes up, we're looking to determine, do we have a need in another area that we can just take that vacancy and shift it over? Or can we let it stay vacant for a longer period of time and potentially not fill it right away? So those are decisions that we're making, I think, each time a vacancy comes up. The other thing that, you know, we're looking at is how can we increase our revenues? So we're looking for our facilities rentals now that we're coming out of COVID. Do we have more opportunities for that? You know, hopefully here, we're going to see some movement with ATUP, where we will be generating some long-term lease revenue that will be going into our budget model. So it really is a comprehensive approach of looking at everything. As, and I, as I mentioned, using our reserves as well to get us there, get us through the next two to three years.
Okay. And I don't want to steal her thunder. I see she has a question, but it seems to me what you're saying is what trustee Widded, and I asked several times for, which is an organization review. And it sounds like you're on that path to do something like that, which is good. And I think it's needed and, you know, it looks like we're going to have to make some tough decisions. But the last question I have is, so what's our operating budget? I know, I feel like I ask you this every year. For some reason, I think it's around 400 million?
So I would say our operating budget is here. And it's really the unrestricted general fund, our total expenditures. And so it's 326 million is probably one of the the most common ways to look at a community college budget is how much have you budgeted in your expenditures in your unrestricted general fund, which is our operating. If you want to look at our operating revenues, that would be this slide here. And so counting our beginning balance plus our revenues, it's about 385 million. But I focus on the expenditure side a little bit more. And so I would say that our operating budget is the 326 million that you see right here. Overall, as an entire district, we're just shy of a billion dollars.
Yeah.
I see, I see that. But I appreciate that highlighting the, the operating budget number and, and then the deficit challenges we have. And, and I, and I have to say as a, I know we're all taxpayers, but the fact that property tax increases are slowing down is not a bad thing. Lots of us are really taxed high in California. And so we need to fund our district, but we also, taxpayers need some relief too. So I will, with that, I'll turn it over to trustee Milchker. Thank you both again, always well-prepared. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And the next person is trustee Rydell has a question.
Actually, it was addressed right at the end about the organizational review. And I just ask the district if they can keep us up to date as they're doing that.
Will do.
Thank you.
And then, and then I noticed, first of all, I had my questions answered earlier today by Chancellor Burke. But I noticed that on page seven, our, our total funds are 1.2 billion. So it's really nice to have a district that has, has a billion dollars funds to work with. I know that this is, you know, this is everything, but, but it's, it's really a lot of money and we really need to be very careful. And I think you're doing a wonderful job in making sure that we're spending our money well. One of the questions I have was similar to Tim's, but it was, I know that, that the value of houses in our area just shot up during the pandemic because people didn't spend money on anything besides their houses and their sporting goods in their houses and their Peloton bikes and anything else that, that would help them work out and stay at home and be comfortable. So I was just kind of surprised to see that the... that would help them work out and stay at home and be comfortable. So I was just kind of surprised to see that the, that the property tax revenue is, is slowing down in the increase. Is, is that this, this year as well?
Yes, what we, what we put into our twenty-one, twenty-two budget is the projected increase that we received from the county itself. So we reached out to the county and asked, what are they projecting for property tax increases? And that was where they came back with the, the three point eight percent, and that was what we put into our budget.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they took into account the, the, the actual amount that the price of houses have gone up this year.
No. So, you know, the, the way the property taxes work, they're, they're limited to how much they can increase them each year. And only when the property turns over, you know, basically it's sold and somebody else purchases it, is when the value of that property gets increased on the tax rolls.
That's, that's a good point. That's an excellent point. Yeah, thank you, thank you. And then I also noticed it looked like the childcare center is holding its own. It's, it's funding itself. It's not costing the district any money, and I was really glad to see that. So that was really.
No, Saddleback College does need to make a contribution to the childcare center, and so that is built into that number.
Oh, it is, okay. The, the numbers didn't say that, but, okay, that's good to know. Okay, thank you. That, that was very interesting, and we're looking forward to the final budget in, in August. So now we move item six point one to, to the next item, and do we have a, do we have a motion and a second for that item six point one?
Somebody move.
Thank you. So, so trustee Wright made the motion and trustee Jay seconded it. Are there any questions or comments on item six point one? We just went through the presentation, but we're approving the tentative budget, of course. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll call?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay. Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
It passes, and the next, next we move to the consent calendar. And are there any items that any board members want to remove from the consent cali- oh, first, we need a motion and a second for the entire consent calendar. Is there a, are there any trustees that will give a motion in, in a second?
I think you want to pull items first.
You pull items first, okay. Okay, are there any items that the board members want to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, I, I have one. I want to pull five point fifteen.
Five point fifteen, okay. Change orders, okay.
Anybody else have it?
That was when I was gonna, I was gonna pull that one too, Bobby. So you got it.
I already got my question answered on the other items. Okay, thank you. So is there a motion and a second for, for the consent calendar with the exception of five fifteen? So moved. And trustee Wright seconds it. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll for the consent calendar with the exception of five fifteen?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, next we go to item five fourteen, which is change orders and amendments. And trustee Jay, do you have your question?
It was five.
Was it five fifteen?
Five fifteen.
Okay, sorry.
Twenty-two. It is Forge Cre- Creative LLC Professional Services Agreement to design and develop new college mascot logo from five seventeen to nine thirty, two thousand twenty-one. This is from Saddleback College, twenty thousand dollars. How much is this change of mascot from Gauchos to Bobcat going to cost us? And I also thought, could the students design the new logo, the mascot? That would be a wonderful student project. It would save us twenty thousand dollars.
So trustee Jay, can I add to yours friendly amendment?
Yes, please.
I, I think she just asked it, but I, I do want to know, that's not the only cost associated with the elimination of the Gaucho. So, yeah, I, I concur. There's the turf change. There's lots of things.
The best last week was.
So I think it's, college made a decision, but the board, you know, we want to know how much this is costing the taxpayers.
Sure, happy to take that on. So first, let's talk about hiring a graphic artist firm. So we felt it was very important to hire a professional firm that's done mascot designs for major universities. In fact, we've done so. This went out through a formal RFP process, interviewed several firms, and ultimately chose one that presented very nice designs from a number of universities. I want to remind everybody that even if we hadn't changed the Bobcat or haven't changed the mascot to the Bobcat, we would have had to have changed the G design. The G creates an intellectual prop- threat to the college and the district. I don't know if this has been made clear before, but not doing something about the graphic design and the logo of the G would have put us under exposure for liability under intellectual property law because that G is very much like the G of a professional sports team. So we felt that that was necessary anyway. So what the graphic artist firm is doing is a whole package of new logos for the new mascot, but understand that much of that would have been necessary anyway just for the G. So we're doing this all in one fell swoop to be efficient about it. And it is a professional firm. I appreciate that students would have had a good time and a good experience being part of this. But a mascot, we hope, is going to be a mascot for many decades to come, and it is the branding of the college. It's part of how we sell naming rights to the stadium and other facilities. So we felt it was very important that it be professional and it look professional. The firm that we hired actually is going to talk to students and interview students and get input on it, including students and design programs. So they will have an opportunity for input, but the final design will be made by a professional firm. As for other costs associated with a mascot change, we are looking at various items across the college that need to be changed. Most of the big ones have already been done, and as they get done, they come to you for approval, unlike the turf change that came up in the last. So I think we've already talked about those, but I'm happy to take any additional questions. Many of the other changes in the future are going to be made by painting things out, by developing vinyl decals that go over the old forms, cost-effective ways of making things go away over time, and none of it is going to be done in one fell swoop. We're going to grandfather in some of the old designs as long as we're showing good faith effort and getting rid of the questionable G.
So I know Terry has questions. You, we will be provided at some point. You know, I think, I think as a board, we need to know all of the taxpayer costs associated with this. That's it.
Yes, not go around and around. Just tell us exactly.
Yeah, I mean, we have the total numbers. I mean, I know the turf change is in there. I was on campus the other day. I think I saw a G somewhere. So it's all the costs associated with that, Elliot. I think it'd be helpful for us to know.
You bet. We can, we can keep a cumulative record for you, trustee Jamal, and then present that to the board in the future. But remember that all the significant costs do come to you for approval, as did the ones last month.
Trustee Milchker, I just need to point out that the question that trustee Jay raised is actually in board item number five sixteen, five point one six.
Oh, it's under five point, yeah, it's okay, okay.
You guys pulled five point one five.
Oh, my God.
Actually already voted on and approved five point sixteen.
Yeah, so can we just, we've already, five point sixteen, because we've already, okay, okay.
But now you're going to need to approve five point one five, even though there were no questions specific to that one.
No, that was purchase orders and checks, and five point sixteen is contracts. Okay. This was under contracts.
Correct.
Okay, so is there a motion and a second for item five point fifteen that we haven't had any?
I see trustee Whit Rydell had her hand up. I don't know.
Rydell, is your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to ask a question of Dr. Stern. Back when, back in the sixties, when we, when we got our mascot and our logo, and I remember coming on board. Just tell me if I'm wrong. I remembers, because that, that was a big G there, that we received verbal permission from the, from the football team that we could use it in good faith. And I know that it was verbal. I remember it was Dr. Lombardi, and I'm not sure why we were talking about it. He was the superintendent and chancellor at the time. So do, do you know about that, or did we investigate that they're still in good faith that we would have used it? I just, I just want to know because I, I meant to look it up, to be honest with you, but I just haven't had the time.
It's interesting, and it wouldn't surprise me, trustee Rydell. I, I've never heard that. But the issue is that teams generally don't too, as a matter of practice, when a logo is just used for the, the mascot at their own sporting events. But when the logo is used for punitive purposes, like naming a stadium and branding merchandise, then the profits from all that, the revenue from all that are subject to liability suits. So in that we now have a stadium and we're looking for naming rights, and we're talking about televising that logo for big, important games, it's very important that we not expose the trustees, the district, the college to liability for using what is clearly the mascot that looks awfully like a professional sports team. So even if they had waved it off verbally, I think they would have meant for athletic purposes, for, you know, public purposes, not for revenue raising purposes. And that's why we have to be very careful at this particular inflection point.
Well, thank you, because the game has changed now with our stadium. But I do believe I'm right. I don't know if Dr. Lombardi's still in the area, but I, I, I just remember that to be true, so. At any rate.
Which Lombardi, I mean, if it's the other Lombardi, we should be good, Terry. I mean, if it's the Lombardi from Wisconsin, there shouldn't be a problem.
No, 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 Riz Lombardi hired me. Yeah, okay, thank you very much, Dr. Stern.
Thank you. Okay, so, so now we need to vote on item five fifteen, so can I have a motion and a second to, to vote?
Some moves.
Thank you. So, so trustee Whit Rydell moves and trustee Wright seconds it. So the board secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, we already voted on item six point one. Now we're on six point two, Board Agendas Platform and Structure. And do I have a motion and a second?
I, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, should we have a motion and a second before you make the comment? If it's part of discussion, then yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so do, somebody else want to make a motion?
Not me.
I know. So, so trustee Jamal makes a.
Prendergast, Prendergast made the motion.
Prendergast makes a motion. Is there a second? Okay, trustee Inman makes a second. Now trustee Jay, now you can comment. I think you have to have a motion and a second before you can discuss it.
Oh, okay. For the new board agenda, board docs, I'm going to vote against it because I feel I, I must be trained on it before I approve it. I must be satisfied that this is for us. So I, I'm against the new board docs. I want to be trained first, and then after I'm trained, then maybe if I feel it's right for us, then I'll approve it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Are, are there any other comments?
Can I ask trustee, oh, go ahead. I was going to ask trustee Jay a question. Or maybe the chancellor.
Go ahead.
So, are the trustees to address trustee Jay's question, are the trustees going to receive training before this is deployed?
Yes. Yes, the, the plan is to, to use it at the July meeting, and you will be trained in advance of that.
Yeah, so, so.
So we'll be setting up training for next month.
Yeah, I, I already asked that question because I went through this item already, and, and so we'll be trained before the July meeting, which we do have to get training before the July meeting. It's really important, of course.
You have the dates?
What if we, we don't? What if we want to go to Gronius? What if we like this old floor map, format better?
I think.
Granicus, yeah.
Well, is there, is there a comment on that? Because I know that.
For, you, you approved board docs last year, and it's taken us a while to get ready to actually implement the, the actual software. And we would ask you, a tremendous amount of staff time has been devoted to this, and it is the program that is used throughout the state. So it'll provide us resources that we don't currently have with Granicus. It's far more effective in terms of the use of staff time in putting the board agenda together. So I would ask that we, since it's already been approved and what's actually before you in six point two, is simply a revision to the agenda format. It's not really an approval of board docs. But ask that we at least use board docs for six months to a year now that we've put time into it. And then if you want to consider moving to something else, let us do that analysis to, to make a change. I mean, how long Granicus will be around or available is another story. We had an issue with Granicus today where the, their servers went down and our agenda disappeared off the website.
Yeah, I brought, I brought that to everyone's attention when it suddenly, the agenda disappeared on my, on my.
And we received no notification from them. It was because trustee Milchker brought our attention to it that we found out, and we called them and said, hey, where's our agenda? So I am concerned about the status of Granicus as a, as a business based at least on that experience. So whereas board docs is being used by probably ninety or more percent of the community colleges in the state. So it has a, a well-defined and large following, so we know it will be maintained.
And will we get, be larger print?
Yes, we are able to make the print larger in the printed copy.
Okay.
Yes, some of the board gets their agendas online and some get, gets the printed copies, so, so it has to be.
More of us get printed copies.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so, can, madam secretary, can you call the roll for, for this item? This is to approve the board, the board agendas platform and structure.
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Trust, student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Thank you. And the next is item six point three, approval of addendum number three for the twenty twenty facilities master plan to the environmental impact report for the twenty eleven facilities master plan. If you, if you read.
So moved.
A little bit, okay. See, Jamal made this motion. Who, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, trustee Jay seconded. Can you, okay, are, are there any questions or comments on it? Okay, it was.
No, it's a good development.
It was a good development. It was interesting, actually. So it's, it's all there, so it's, it's good. Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Rydell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
I, I noticed that trustee Whit Rydell and I sign, sign it. I just wondered when we sign it. Do you know when we sign it?
I will be bringing it to you tomorrow for the tour, trustee Milchker.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Nice to sign things. Okay, item number six point four, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven five-year construction plan and the initial project proposal. and the Initial Project Proposals and Final Project Proposals, and this was very interesting also. Do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
The trustee Wright made the motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
And trustee Jay seconded, okay. Are there any questions or comments? Good, we're moving ahead with this. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
The item 6.5 is the Bookstair Operating Agreement Amendment with Fall at Higher Education Group. Is there a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
The trustee Jay makes the motion, and trustee Ridell seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? No, so.
I just, no, I, I just want to say it's sad that this has to happen, but it's a sign of the times.
Yeah, plus we're doing a lot more zero, zero book costs.
Correct, yeah.
We're using less books, and you know, going.
Yeah.
Doing myself, so you're right.
They've been there a very long time.
Yeah, that's true, thank you. I agree, I agree. Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Okay, next, 6.6, are the Landscape and Irrigation Services at ATEP? And it's Bright View Landscape Services. Is there a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Makes the motion, and trustee Wright seconds it. Are there any questions?
No, I wish we should have gotten more bids, I mean, there's so many landscape services companies in South Orange County, I mean, Orange County, that it's too bad we didn't get more submissions, I'm sure they're qualified, but like to have a little more competition.
Yeah. What was the, what was the cost again? I'm not going to open it.
Four thousand a year, was it?
No, the cost per year, for the first year, is sixty-four thousand, the second year, sixty-six thousand. Yeah, we were, we were hoping that we would have had more bids as well. We had four firms that did the mandatory job walk, but only one firm responded, so we did.
Wow.
Three other firms to find out why they did not bid on it. And there were various reasons. Some of them could not meet our safety requirements. So the modification rating, which is their workers' comp experience rating, was too high. Some others felt that the size and scope was beyond their capacity. One of the others felt that they couldn't support it properly, because they were not located in Orange County, and they felt that the proximity was too far away for them. Another one just felt that they couldn't support the specialized equipment needs, you know, so there were various factors. But we did do our due diligence, and actually called every single one of them to find out why they didn't bid.
Good for you.
Yeah, great, good, good, thank you. So you did the best you could.
I think it's a fair price.
Did we, did we call the roll?
No.
No.
Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee.
Aye.
And then number 6.7 is a Regional Strong Workforce Program. It's a participation agreement between Rancho Community College District and our district. Is there a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay makes the motion, is there a second?
I second.
Trustee Ridell seconds it, so are there any questions or comments? Where the allocation's going down, actually, as you know, I'm sure. Okay, no questions, can you please call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And the next one is 6.8, it's a Districtwide ADA Accessibility Project Award of Bid. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Wright makes the motion, is there a second?
I do.
And trustee Prendergast seconds it. Are there any questions?
I just, I just want to say, especially at Saddleback, from my brief experience when I was hobbling around with my little scooter on my Achilles' tear, this is a long time coming, and there are lots of people that suffer far more than I did with getting around campus.
Actually, you're right, go ahead, sir.
So, I'm all for it.
Actually, you're right, it's a very, it's a beautiful campus, because it's hilly, and some of the buildings are built right into the hills, but it's beautiful, because it's hilly, but it's tough to get around, and we, when we took the tour, we saw the softball field, which is virtually impossible to get to if you're handicapped at all, so it does have a great need, so you are, you are right, I agree with you, I didn't mean to interrupt. Okay. Are there any other questions? No, so, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And the next one is 6.10, Board Policy Revisions, there's 11 Board Policies, and these are just for review.
6.9?
6.9.
6.9.
6.9, sorry. The asphalt repairs at Irvine Valley College and Saddleback College, and it awards the bid to J.B. Bostek and Company. It's eight hundred and five dollars, okay, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Moves it, and trustee Wright seconds it, okay, thank you, are there any questions or comments?
Just want to say it's a little more than eight hundred and five dollars.
Oh, eight hundred and five thousand dollars, you're right.
Got a word there.
You have to have three more zeros at the end of that one, I see it, I see it now, I just was talking quickly, you know. Thanks. Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
Yes.
Yes.
We did that already, okay, are there any questions? Okay, can the Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
And the next one are the Board Policy Revisions, and there's 11 Board Policies. We accept it for review and study.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jay recommends, makes the motion, and trustee Jamal seconds it. Are there any questions or comments, these are just for review and study?
No.
No, so can, can the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Thank you, and the next is 6.11, Board Policy Revisions, and there are six of them, and these are to be approved, so can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion.
Second.
And trustee Ridell seconds it. Are there?
Trustee Inman.
Trustee Inman, sorry, trustee Inman seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? I assume that the, that the committee has gone through these already and approved them?
Yes, we have.
This item.
No, not these, no.
This item came to the board last month for review and study?
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
It's here for approval now.
Great.
Okay, so if there's no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And item 6.12 is Award of Architectural Services for the Saddleback College Parking Lot and Expansion and Replace a Sofa Field Project, which the board was given a tour of, and we realized it does need help. So is there a motion in a second for this?
So moved.
Second.
Jay makes the motion, and trustee Wright seconds it. Are there any questions or comments? No, okay, Madam Secretary, can you please call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Then I have Saddleback College Solar Canopies, is that right?
No, you have the Real Estate Brokerage Services.
Yeah, okay, I'm not sure how this got in there, this is my typed out agenda, that's why I'm not sure how I put that in there. Okay, 6.13 is Agreement for the Real Estate Brokerage Service for the ATEP.
6.13.
6.13, Agreement for Real Estate Brokerage Services for Advanced Technology, for ATEP.
So moved.
Okay, trustee Jamal.
I second.
And trustee Ridell seconds it, any questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And 6.14 is Award of Architectural Services for Satellite Coffee Structures and Cafeteria Upgrades. It was granted to SBA Architects. Is there a motion in a second?
I move.
Okay, trustee Inman makes the motion. And trustee Wright seconds it, thank you. Are there any comments or questions? We talked, we talked about this at our tour, so anyway, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And item 6.15 is Academic Employ and Classified Administrators Personnel Actions, and Vice Chancellor Viscatill, are there any changes or updates?
I have been promoted, thank you, there are no changes to the item, however, I do need to read out our legal requirement, because the board will be taking action on two administrative contracts this evening. So the information I need to read out to the board before they take action on the contract would be, the first contract will be for Dr. James Chris Lepian Christensen. Contract dates August 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Arrange 22-step 3 annual salary, 171,444, monthly allowances, transportation 250, cellphone 165. The second position is for Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences and Business Services, IBC. She will begin to be called Dr. Tracy Fahimi, congratulations, Dr. Fahimi, on your doctorate degree. The terms of her contract will be July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2023. Range 22-step 7 annual salary, 208,404, monthly allowances, transportation 250, cellphone 165, thank you.
And I have to also mention that Mark McElroy is retiring, our head football coach, our beloved head football coach at Saddleback College, and he's been working for the district 21 years and nine months, so we have to really thank him for all the service to the college. Is there a motion in a second before we vote on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Most of it, and trustee Wright seconds it. Okay, there probably no questions, so Madam Secretary, can you read the roll, please?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And the next item is 6.16, Classified Items, Classified Personnel Actions, so Vice Chancellor Viscatill, are there any changes?
I'm happy to report there are no changes to this item, thank you, President Milchker.
Okay, thank you, and I also have to mention that Barbara Bangs, who's a senior buyer, is retiring, and she worked for our district 31 years and 11 months, and we thank her for her service as well, in the purchasing department. Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Makes the motion, trustee Wright seconds it. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
And item 6.17, the last item before written reports, is Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Actions. Vice Chancellor Viscatill, do we have any changes to this item?
No changes, thank you.
No changes, so we need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Trustee Jay makes the motion. Somebody wants to.
That's it.
And trustee Ridell seconds it, so can you call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Trustee Inman.
Aye.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Milchiker.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Ridell.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Mateen.
Aye.
Yeah, I haven't asked you this, chancellor, do I have to read off all the list of the written reports, even though we're not voting on them?
I think you just go through them, 7.1, Staff Response to Public Comments, there are none.
Okay, okay, I'll do that then. 7.1, Staff Response to Public Comments, None. 7.2, List of Board Requested Reports. Seven point three, CCC Trustee Member Election. And um, we could actually, our, our student trustee could nominate someone or, or herself to become the student trustee of the state. Seven point four, Facilities Plan Status Report. Seven point five is CARES, Carissa and ARP Act Funds Monthly Summary. Seven point.
Uh, Marsha, hold on a second. So on seven point five, um, I glan, I glanced at it, but I, and maybe I missed it, Emery, on seven point five, how we're spending the remaining money. Is there, I mean, did I miss that or is, is that in there?
No, we do not have a um, analysis yet of how we're going to spend it. Um, if you'd like, that's something that we could include because like, we will be charging by the end of, by June 30th. So when we're closing the books, we are going to be charging a lot of it to our lost revenue that we incurred. So we won't have as much that we're going to be carrying over. So you'll see that in the adopted budget.
Yeah.
And if it's something that you want to see a plan, we can add that to the adopted budget as a slide.
I mean, you know, plan meaning just where you intend to, you know, spend the funds. Yeah, that would be, that'd be useful.
Okay. Are these all the CARES, the Carissa and ARP funds, are these all considered to be part of the HERF fundings?
Yes. Yeah, they're collectively called the HERF Funding, which is the Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund.
Mm-hmm.
So it's HERF one, HERF two, and HERF three. But they were the, the three separate acts.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask?
Oh, trustee Whitredell.
Yeah, um, Emery, uh, do you possibly know about what we're carrying over after June 30th?
No.
No?
They're still, the campus is, they're still going through that. Um, we are also still waiting on some guidance from our external auditors on how to calculate things. And so as soon as we get that, we'll be able to do it.
Yeah, I remember you saying that one or two board meetings ago that we would have uh, somewhat significant um, carryover that can help us out in, in twenty-one, twenty-two. So, okay, mm-hmm, good.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, any other questions? Okay, seven, seven point six is COVID-19 Response Black Block Grant Monthly Summary. And um, seven point seven, monthly financial status, status reports. And seven point eight, Retiree OPED Trust Fund, which we're doing excellent at. I'll say, next, we have written and oral reports, and I'll go through all of them. Chancellor Burke, you have a, actually, an excellent written report. Do you also have an oral report?
Yes, I have a brief oral report and it's been touched on by a couple of people. They say when you finish your dissertation, you are, at least for a period of time, a world expert on something. Happy to report that we have two uh, in our midst this time. Uh, Dr. Tracy Fahimi, who you have heard, has finished her dissertation. I don't know what her topic was, but maybe Dr. Hernandez will. And also Dr. Denise Ntseong has finished hers. And she actually focused on how faculty use data. So congratulations to both of our resident experts on their respective dissertation topics.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And then Irvine Valley College President John Hernandez, you have, also have an excellent written report. Do you have an oral report, too?
Sorry about that. You'd think a year later I'd get that, uh.
No one remembers, no.
I, I did want to add, uh, today, uh, I received notification from ACCJC that at the recent commission meeting, uh, the accrediting body determined that IBC's progress uh, is appropriate and they accepted our midterm report, accreditation report. So I'm very pleased about that. Want to thank all those who had um, a direct uh, role in shaping the midterm report, particularly through our shared governance structures. But in particular, I do want to commend Dr. Chris McDonald for his leadership um, with that effort. And uh, I was rejoining the group when they were, when Dr. Burke was congratulating those who just recently defended. Um, they may have missed this, but we do have another individual in addition to Tracy Fahimi from IBC, and that is Amric Johal, our Director of Student Life and Equity. He just successfully defended his dissertation. Um, he was in the higher ed program at UCLA. So want to congratulate also Dr. uh, Dr. Johal.
Well, that's great.
That concludes any additional updates.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And I, I really do like reading the college presidents' reports because it tells you which, how the students are doing at the colleges and, and the awards they won. And it's really fascinating to read. Okay, the, the next one is Saddleback College President Elliot Stern. Um, you have an excellent written report. Do you have an oral report, too, though?
I'll be very quick because we're heading for a record completion here.
I know.
So first, I, I want to second uh, President Hernandez's thanks and gratitude to all who put together our accreditation annual reports. We also received the same ACCJC letter today. I want to shout out to Claire Cesario uh, and of course, Vice President Tram Vokumato, uh, and all the people who, who contributed to that report for Saddleback. Congratulations uh, to all of our new doctorates. And finally, uh, thank you trustees for attending commencement. I know it meant a lot to students and to staff for you to be joining them. And also thank you, uh, President of the Trustees, trustee Milchiker, for your comments about ZTC. In the last six months, uh, we didn't make this in the current board report. We've gone from fifteen ZTC degrees to twenty-two, an increase of fifty percent. That means that we now have twenty-two degrees at our college that can be pursued with classes that have no textbook costs. And we're very proud of that. We're a leader in the state in that and we intend to go much, much further. And we'll put more details about that in next month's board report. Thank you all.
Excellent. Congratulations. That's great. Great for our students. Thank you. Big, big, a big money saver for our students. Okay, the Vice Chancellor of Business Services, um, Vice Chancellor Emery Gabel, do you have a reporter?
Now, my board report was all the agenda items you guys approved tonight.